Dallas, if you'll up and stuff a prayer, please.
I just thank you for this night, God. Thank you for our small town that we can come here and do this. And I thank you for these, uh, this council. I thank you for mayor. Thank you for these, uh, children and for their teachers and for their parents. God, I just, uh, pray good night to the Lord and you can do this. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this one where the nation is strong.
I think we need to have a city government week every week so that we'd have a full chamber, but, um, I'm glad everyone showed up. Item number one on our regular agenda tonight was in honor of Florida City Government Week, October twentieth to twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, the Hilliard Elementary School students participated in an essay contest titled, "If I Were the Mayor of Hilliard." And right now, what I'd like to do is if they are here, I'd like to bring them up and read their essay. Uh, Bronson Miller, is Bronson here? All right, well, I'm gonna read their essay. Is, uh, is, uh, the teacher here for Bronson? All right. "If I were the mayor of Hilliard, I would get access to doctors. I'd help people with life and I, and I'd help people learn new things. I would do them because I love my community. I would get access to doctors because I want people to be healthy. I want to help people with life because some people need help. I would teach kids because some people don't know how to read." So that was Bronson's. Do we have Shailin Henry here?
He was honorable mention.
Yeah, this, these were the, the honorable mention, Shailin. If you'll just stand right up here, I'm gonna read your essay. Yes, ma'am. Hers was, "If I would build them all firstly, we would have more convenient shopping and more jobs for the town. Also, with more jobs, people have more money to pay bills and buy things. The government taxes it and then pays the city people like firefighters, police, and builders to do their jobs. So honestly, I think it's a good idea." And her P.S. was, "Thank you for being a good man." That's not the reason you were picked as an honorable mention, but it helped. But if you'll stay there, uh, Nash, is Nash here? All right, well, Nash, his, uh, he was the third place. And it's, was, "If I were the mayor of Hilliard, I would lower the price on groceries so other people can take care of their kids. I'd make doughnut stores everywhere because some people love doughnuts. I would shop, I would stop people from cutting trees down because animals are losing homes. This is what I'd do as the mayor of Hilliard." And that was our third place essay winner. Our second place essay winner was Paris. And Paris, uh, her teacher is Ms. Norman. Uh, her essay was, "I would put a chain of restaurants for communities so people don't have to drive miles just to go somewhere. I would have more gatherings for the holidays so communities can be together and be happier. I would fix roads limiting the chance of accidents and potholes. That's what I would do if I were mayor of Hilliard. I would also build a shopping center with a movie theater so families can enjoy a movie whenever they want and build more parks and recreation so people can focus on their health and wellness." That was Ms. Paris's. Now, our essay winner was Miley Smith. Miley, if you'll come up here. Hers was, "If I was mayor of Hilliard, I would invite all the community people out for a happy festival. A day of games, rides, shows for all ages, homemade food, and baked goods. It would be fun for everyone to spend time together and get to know all the people we live around. When the sun goes down, we would have a big dance and fireworks to light up the sky. Then everyone would, would go home happy and full." And that was Miley. And thank y'all for y'all's essay. Y'all see what we got? Have you had their teachers and their parents? If y'all wanna come up and get a picture? I know we got that picture sent to John up there by the same. All right, thank y'all. Now, the essay winners, hold on, I got something for y'all. Paris, here is, yes, Paris, that is a hoodie bag for you and your, our certificate. And then we've got Shailin. Shailin, here's your certificate. And then hoodie bag for you. Hey, you can, you can, too. And then Miley, we've got your certificate and everything for you, and you will come up and take a seat. Then we're gonna bring the council up, okay? You'll sit up there by Ms. Alicia. All right, our second item on the agenda was in honor of Florida City Government Week, October twentieth to the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, the Hilliard Elementary School students will conduct a mock town council meeting. First, I wanna thank the supervisor of elections. They gave all the students a, a look into what it's gonna be like whenever they turn eighteen. They brought the voting machines in there. They showed them how to vote, so it gave them a kind of a leg up. And I know that Alicia was there, and there's been some pictures on Facebook for it, but I wanna thank, uh, the, um, thanks, uh, Ms. Janet Atkins in her office for, for doing that. But I wanna bring up the mock council. We've got, uh, Aniston Eddie. Aniston, come on up and stand here because we're gonna get, we're gonna get pictures. And we got Knox Payne. And then we got Gentry Pickett. And Eli Thigpen. And Stratton Wingate. There's our, there's our council. Thank y'all for, for doing this. Now, do we have, uh, the parents and teachers of any of these students? No, no, they're in the fifth grade. I'm sure they didn't draw up your. So y'all take a step forward and get closer together. We'll get a picture, okay? Come on in here. Come on in here. I'm gonna have a picture for you. So let's gather the look in.
All of them.
All of them. All right. Um, now, y'all got a couple pictures. All right, council, y'all stay right here where you're at. Now, I do have something on the table for each one of y'all that y'all can take whenever y'all go home, but it's all a little hoodie bag and your, uh, certificates and everything. I would ask now at the council if they will go into the audience, y'all are gonna take their seats. If y'all have your names out, you can get those chairs. Can you get it? Now, this is our second, um, time that we've had a mock council. And I really appreciate the, the elementary school for, for doing this. It kinda gives them a, an idea of what government is like. And we have some items on the agenda that were, that come straight from their essays. And some of these essays, they were all hard to, to pick a winner because they were so good. But we had to pick one, pick some, but some of the items that we have on the agenda, um, that's what we're gonna talk about. So we're gonna dispense with the, with the call to order, the pledge, and the prayer, because we've already done that. So we'll go straight into item number one. Can you read that one?
Town. Town council to discuss starting a happy festival for families and the community.
There we go. Now, did, uh, uh, did y'all get a chance to, to discuss this in all of y'all's classes, this item? So ask them if, what they thought, what they discussed, how they thought, how they talked about it.
I'll tell talk about it and what y'all discuss.
What, Aniston, you wanna start us out? Okay, all right. Do you come up to some of our festivals that we have? Okay, good, good. Uh, Knox, what about you?
I think that talking would make more friends and have a good day.
Okay. Um, Gentry?
I think it's a good idea because people can try new foods, meet together, and talk and make new friends.
All right. Eli, what about you?
Um, people can have fun and make new friends, meet their, like, family that they haven't met in a while.
Okay, and, uh, Stratton, I see you've been, I, I, I guess they took some of your ideas, but you could say the same thing.
Oh, I think that it can get like, if you don't exer- ex- exercise a lot, it can like, you can get out bores and like, exercise and have a great time.
Okay, so y'all think it, y'all all think it's a good idea to have more festivals?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what kind of festivals would y'all like to see? Because I know we have our, we have a fall festival and we have a Christmas festival. What are, what other kind of festivals would y'all like to see?
Well, I know the county that, so they need to do like a holiday fair or something.
Okay. All right.
I would say a Christmas fair because you're gonna get food and rides.
Okay, well Stratton, we'll start with you on that end at this time.
Yes, sir.
What, what, what different kind of festivals would you like to see?
I would, uh, like to see, like, Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay, Eli?
Um, maybe like an Easter festival and we could all have a big Easter hunt.
There you go. I like that. And then Gentry?
Um, I would like to see a Halloween festival so we can see other people's creative Halloween ideas.
Well, I, it just, uh, just so happens, we're gonna have a trunk or treat event this Saturday. So you can come up here with, in your costume and, and get some candy, and it's actually gonna be Food Truck Saturday. So we'll have all the community here Saturday. All right, uh, you wanna move to item number two? Okay, read item number two for us.
Town council to discuss the.
Current?
Current.
Condition?
Condition of roads and ideas for the improvement.
There you go. So you wanna call on each one of them to see what their thoughts are on, on fixing the roads, how they would fix the roads?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, there's their names if you, if you want, if you wanna call on any of them.
Stratton, what would be your?
I think, uh, how we should, uh, fix the conditions of the roads, like, put, like, more new cement over the roads so there isn't like, so you kinda don't lose control.
Okay.
Like, where I live, there's like a hole, there's like a square of rocks, and sometimes I don't see them on my bike, and it kinda makes me lose control.
Okay, we'll go on the next one.
Pronounce their names.
About Knox?
Knox.
Make the roads and fill the potholes so there's less crashes.
Okay. Aniston?
Yeah. Aniston?
I think adding more cops so there'll be less speeding so that some people.
All right, so you brought a different approach to it. Instead of fixing roads, uh, get the cops out there to stop people from flying up and down the roads. Okay. All right, and then now we've got Eli.
Um, maybe we could, like, add more stop signs and red lights and, like, more roads and more houses so people have more places to live.
Okay. And then the last one, Gentry?
Gentry. I would create a schedule for grading dirt roads, and then I would also get new signs for roads because some are broken, fading, and just not in good condition.
Now, do you live on a dirt road or you live on a paved road?
A paved road.
Okay, do any of y'all live on a dirt road? You live on the, y'all live on a dirt road? Okay, so y'all know how, y'all know how bad it is whenever it rains and, okay. All right, well, that was some good ideas for how to fix the roads and, you know, getting people to slow down and, and getting the towns and the county to fix the, the potholes and stuff, so those were some good ideas. Now, you wanna go to item number three?
Town council to discuss stop and cutting down of trees so that animals won't continue to lose their homes. Aniston?
I think that perhaps the better idea to stop cutting down trees and maybe looking at more trees and more homes.
Okay.
Eli?
Um, maybe we could, like, stop cutting down as much trees so we can, like, not make animals have more chance of going extinct.
Gentry?
I think we should stop cutting down a, a lot of trees because some people hunt and deer like to go where there's a bunch of trees and stuff.
So you're in favor of keeping the trees?
Yes, sir. Knox?
I would say cut a little bit of trees down, but not too much because if you cut too much down, more animals will lose their lives.
Okay, what did you think, what do you think about this, Miley? What, what, what was your thoughts on this?
That you, um, could stop cutting trees down because, like, all the squirrels and all that lose their homes, fly in their nest, and birds lose their nest and all that.
Okay, well, and one thing I haven't heard is where do you get air from? Where do you get oxygen from, from trees? So, you know, if we cut down all the trees, we're not gonna have oxygen. So, okay, what is Stratton's?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say the same thing as you just said.
Great minds think alike. Great minds, all right, so we wanna go to item number four?
Town clinic to discuss how to extract more, attract more doctors and healthcare services to Hilliard. Aniston?
I think we're taking it back more, but the houses could probably be, and the people can, they're so, 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 to come and, be doctors and.
Okay.
Eli?
Eli? Um, maybe we can, like, shorten their work times, and if we short their work times, then we can also get more doctors so it can also cover, like, all day service.
Gentry?
I think we should build some more and then, like, cut their schedule a little bit shorter and then pay them more money.
Knox?
I would say make their billboards that saying that they saw their children less work time so they would see it in their art class and make more doctors.
Strat?
I think you should, uh, don't pay doctors, like, work every single day. I think they should have, like, two, two or one, two or one days of break. But they still get good pay.
And what are your thoughts on having more doctors and healthcare providers in the town?
To have more doctors to, like, help people, more people, and for healthcare to, like, have different people be working at the, like, the nursing homes out there.
Okay. All right, um, some of the essays that I read, um, had paying, uh, paying teachers like a million dollars and, and, you know, I, I'm sure that they would, they would like that, and those are some good ideas about how to get more doctors in here is to pay them, pay them good money, so, you know, maybe that's something that we can look at. All right, you wanna go to item number five?
Yes, sir. Town coun- council to discuss building more stores so that we can collect government taxes to pay for more firefighters, police, and in Hilliard.
Okay. Well, I know that we have some firefighters that are on our council right now, and I'm sure they would enjoy having larger salaries, and it would be nice to have our police, now, the town doesn't actually have a police force, but we, we rely on Nassau County to supplies our police force. So, yeah, y'all talk to the sheriff and see if he can hire some more deputies. But, uh, you wanna call them out and see what, what they have to think about?
Aniston?
I think that we add more veterans every day and they're building social services, five, beginning to five, I think.
Okay.
Eli?
Um, maybe, like, we can increase their salary pay and make them, like, have a two, three day break off.
Gentry?
I think we should get new cars and stuff for the police and new gear and more fire hydrants for the firefighters.
Knox?
I'd miss it, but he's new.
Knox.
Knox, I'd be Knox.
I would say, because if you raise their salary, we'll get more workers, and the workers will make Hilliard safer.
Okay.
Strat?
Um, the way that we can probably get more police officers is like, put more speed limits up and, uh, more speed signs up so, so the police can, like, hide somewhere. Somewhere.
All right, Ms. Miley, what do you have to say on this topic?
Um, to probably put more fire hydrants, like, back, back, back at the end and all that. And like, by the baseball field, just in case one of the lights go out.
Okay.
Jumpfire and, where the police probably put more signs up.
Okay, okay, well, that, uh, that kinda goes over all of our topics that we had for tonight. Um, Ms. Miley, you wanna call and see if there's any public input on anything tonight?
Public comments?
I'm sure we have a parent or a teacher or two that wanna ask a question or make a statement, i- if y'all would. To the podium?
You all did great.
All right, any other public comment?
We should really elect y'all into town. Y'all have some good ideas. Well, you're on your time.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm sorry, I, I wish, because we're actually recording this and it's on YouTube, so I, I would like for y'all to come up and to the podium, state your name, and so that they can hear, because when you're at home, you can't hear, um, what people say in the crowd. Go ahead, turn it on.
Good evening, council members. Joe Zimmerman, Nassau County School Board, District Three. I wanna congratulate you guys on having an excellent session tonight and echo your calls for preserving trees to save the lives of animals, but possibly not creating more hiding spots for police officers. But thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm Cheyenne Kane. I'm a homeowner in Hilliard. I'm also a mother in Hilliard, and I think you guys did a great job. I would really think of electing you guys into the council. You had good ideas, especially about grading the dirt roads and fixing the potholes. I'd really appreciate that with those expensive truck tires. Thank y'all.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think all of the ideas were really good, and, um, I could see why y'all had trouble picking a winner. And it was really awesome being here, and, um, I, I think that, um, the cutting down the trees thing, I was surprised not to hear, like, at least multiple people saying, like, wait, wait a second, we gotta, we gotta catch on some. We need the wood, right?
I think all of y'all's statements are good, and I would definitely hire y'all if, if, if it was y'all.
All right, any other public comment? If not, um, we go around and have the council say something, so, uh, council, Stratton, what you got?
I think that the teachers should be nicer. Because, uh, because there's this one student in my class, and he's, like, kinda big, and, uh, my teacher makes fun of him.
All right, so, was that it? That all you had?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you'll come up.
Eli?
Um, I don't really have much to say except, like, that we did, like, a good job, I think, and, like, all the statements were good that they wrote.
Okay.
Gentry?
I think everybody did a good job today, and it was fun being here.
Knox?
All the ideas were good, and everybody did a great job.
Aniston?
I think that teachers should, for everything you can do, and it's relevant to have such a good teacher.
Well, you have two members of the school board that are here tonight, so maybe they'll take your suggestions forward. All right, Ms. Mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to, to say?
Yes, sir.
Um, and, you know, ma'am? Yeah, that's unusual for the mayor not to have anything to say. Well, yeah, one more thing, um, I do have something that I wanted to, to read. Um, whenever we got this, this, uh, thing to, for the essay, um, Alicia asked each one of us to write a letter to our cell, or if we were an elementary school student again. And, um, I know that I wrote one, and I'd like to read it, um, if you'll indulge me for just a minute. "If I had the chance to go back to elementary school, I would do many things differently. First, I would focus on being a better student and truly listening to my teachers. They didn't always have the answer, but they knew how to find them, and they understood far more than I did at that time. I would take every opportunity to learn because one of the greatest treasures in life is education, and it's something no one can ever take away from you. I would also spend as much time as possible with my family and friends. Some of my happiest memories came from playing sports, board games, or simply talking with them. Growing up with many brothers and sisters, I learned valuable lessons from my older siblings and found joy in helping my younger ones. The friends I made at your age are still in my life today, which is why I encourage you to make friends now and continue building those relationships as you grow. Before I finish, I wanna leave you with a few important reminders. Always be honest and trustworthy. Telling the truth is easier than trying to remember a lie. Be kind. You have control over how you act and how you treat others. I do my best to treat people the way I wanna be treated. Sometimes people aren't kind in return, but I keep being kind anyway, hoping one day they will be." So that was, that was my letter to, I guess, to my younger self. Ms. Purvis, did you have anything?
No, I feel like, though, that everybody did do a very good job. Y'all spoke very clearly, and you answered every question very well. So you, you all deserve a big applause for how well you did.
So you, you all deserve a big applause for how well you did.
Now, um, the counselor, he, we just got his picture up there. He didn't actually get a chance to join us tonight, but that would be it. Do we have a motion from the regular council to adjourn? Thank y'all. Um, council, I do want to give each of you a, a coin. This is a little token from the town of Hilliard. And then make sure that you get your, your little goodie bag and your, uh, tote and you've got your certificate. And are the teachers from, the two that are here, can you take them to them? Take their? Yeah, because each one of them, there's money in each one of those, uh, envelopes. So hold on to that envelope.